It's a 6.9 presentation of code enforcement illegal dumping abatement grant activities continued from December 17th, 2024. We'll be coming up and conducting this presentation. I see Director Turner and staff. I'll let her introduce her staff. I also have, this can go after you're finished. Yeah. That's for after the presentation. We'll go through the slides and other slides. They're just, I'll explain.
I'm Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. We are excited to give you two different presentations and updates today. This first one will be on our illegal dumping abatement grant activities. Our deputy administrator Shannon Walker Smith works very closely in support of our code enforcement division, and so I will defer to both her and our code enforcement manager, Marcus Biltramo.
Good morning. Happy New Year and welcome to our new supervisors. New start. Thank you to Supervisor Crandall for inviting this presentation about a grant that we received mid-last year from state agency called CalRecycle, and it's focused on illegal disposal or illegal dumping. So it's an area of code enforcement that we haven't had the resources to really focus on in the past. We wrote this grant and it was awarded. So we have identified through that grant application process 42 sites that we will be abating between now and June 30th of '26. So about a year and a half left of this grant, and we're really getting into the swing of things now in the beginning of '25. So this is just a short presentation to kind of give you guys an overview of where we're at. So this, you know, combating illegal dumping in Lake County has been a persistent problem over many years, and it finally materialized that we have some funding to focus in on that. There's some pictures littered into this presentation just to give you an idea of what we see when we go out, especially into isolated areas where people tend to drive back and dump garbage. And so this is a recent photo of a site that was identified as part of this grant. The grant is for $250,000. We did quite a bit of work identifying the sites and getting them approved through the funder, and we are committed to those 42 sites. Unless we should go out to reassess and find that one miraculously got cleaned up on its own or by a community member, then we would be able to replace that site in the future. But for now, we're committed to the 42 sites we submitted under the grant application. And we're going to start with our Nice sites that we identified and then kind of work our way around the lake. And so the abatement work for the first section of the Nice sites will begin shortly. Actually, we're pretty much ready to roll on those abatements, so that's going to begin. In addition to just the abatement work, this grant also has built in a public education piece. So we'll be creating PSAs and just getting out some public education, letting community residents know about what their resources are for other options for getting rid of their trash and garbage. And there's also a bit of money for prevention measures like barricades and lighting and signage to help prevent those sites from becoming a dump site in the future.
Shannon, I have a question. Are these vacant lots that you've targeted?
The large majority of them are vacant lots. There were a couple of properties that were identified as part of the grant that were just kind of longstanding abatements that met the criteria for this grant, but they have been out of our scope in the past. So there are a few where we have identified the property owner, and we will go to, you know, lean after the abatement is completed. But for the majority of these, these are...
And these are up in the paper subdivisions?
A lot, many of them are. Yeah.
Okay.
This is a before and after photo from work done previously. This is one, an example of an illegal dumping site that we will... That's the cleanup. Want to recognize our code enforcement program supervisor, Norman, or Joey Valdez. He's taking the lead on this grant activities. 25% of his time will now be supported by this grant funding for the next year and a half, and he did all of the work really to identify the original sites, and he'll take the lead on all the grant activities going forward, along with our code technician, Janet And I wanted, I'm going to hand it over to Marcus and Joey if he wants to speak as well about our next steps.
I just want to add some clarification. That chart that you saw up there, that's just the first phase. So we have them in phases. So the first phase is going to be those lots and those hills up in the Nice area. So that's where we decided to start, and then we'll work clockwise around the lake and hit all those areas that have been understaffed in the past. But as far as procedurally, we're just going to go through our normal processes. If it is on property, private property or property that has a responsible owner, they will be notified. Notices will be issued, and then we'll go through our codified abatement procedures. So it's just going to be standard procedure as soon as, after the properties have been identified, and so we'll go through the due process part of procedures, and then we'll go through the abatement procedures, and then we'll get a warrant if there's not cooperation or consent from a property owner to allow us to abate the property and consent to the fact that a lien will be attached to the property later. So it'll be standard procedures as we move forward, and this is a big task. Forty-two properties over 10, it's two years, but really we're about a year and a half. So you're looking at about two to three properties a month that we'll be abating and cleaning up. And again, these are properties, I want to reemphasize, these are properties that we have been aware of, but we just didn't have the resources, the money and the time to actually go ahead and get these cleaned up. So these are, I would say in all essence, the worst of the worst.
I have a question.
Supervisor Owen?
Yes. Do you have them broke down as in how many properties are in each district?
Well, I don't know if we broke it down by districts, but we do, we have identified the property, so we do have addresses. If that's something you wish us to provide, we can provide that.
Sure. Thank you.
And then with this process, when you find and identify the properties, will you be able to use data ticket to also fine or put administrative fines on? If you find someone, sorry for saying fine three times now, four times in a row, but if there is someone responsible, you'll be able to, you know, give them that ticket, if you will. I know sometimes you can't. They're somewhere else, maybe in Europe or something that own the property.
Yeah. The other thing we have to be aware of when we're utilizing grant funds for abatements is that, and particularly with this grant, any program income, not fines, we can find people and collect that income, but any program income that we would collect through a lien process would go back to CalRecycle or be utilized for, to continue grant activities. So that's something that we'll negotiate with them at the end of the grant term, but because the abatement is grant funded, then the money recovers, goes back to the original funder.
And actually, to just piggyback on that, there'll be a first lien holder, which will be CalRecycle, and then the county will be a second lien holder. So they would get their grant funds reimbursed, and then our administrative costs, we would get the reimbursement for that. So when we do the lien, it'll have a first priority and then a second priority.
Supervisor Spatia? And I'm going to piggyback on Chair Crandall's comments. I think there's a reason we have fines, and that's how we change behavior, and I think it makes sense, if we're getting paid already, to do the work and to do the abatement, but we have fines on the side, and we want to really push people to not do these things again. So absolutely looking forward to these places being cleaned up, but also seeing the fines being applied, because these people are not just ruining their environment and their community, but they're using precious public resources for us to have to deal with these things when it's their responsibility to deal with it.
And I just want to add one thing. These are the properties that they have, if there is a property and are still around, they have not done what they need to do, or properties that are just completely abandoned. So there's really no responsible property. But we have been having success, early successes with data ticket and the administrative fines. People have really, it's really caught their attention, and you know, those cases where they have not been communicative in the past, all of a sudden they get this administrative fine. We've had two just before the holiday break that came in and said, what can I do about this? So we've had seen some early positive results, but again, these are the properties that, you know, there's really nobody around. But as part of our procedures, in this case, to save on time and to be efficient, we would issue the notice of violation at the same time as the order to abate. And so once that 30 days has expired, we would then issue the admin fine, send that off. It'll do what it does. But the main purpose of the Cal grant is to clean up California, clean up Lake County, and to eliminate these health and safety issues.
Additionally, with illegal dumping in particular, we do, we do go looking in dump piles for any, you know, information about responsible parties. So we are looking for mail. There are certain criteria we have to utilize, but we are, you know, trying to identify any, if we can identify the source of the dumping, we will do so.
Supervisor Asmussen?
Yeah, since we're on the topic, I just wanted to chime in that I'm definitely in support of, you know, these fines and holding people accountable as much as we can, because this is, problem's been ongoing for years, and I think those administrative fines in particular, it's been my experience, they do have a huge impact. So just wanted to throw that out. Thank you.
Did you, Norman, did you want to come up and add anything?
Part of holding these property owners responsible, it becomes a bit difficult as in they're not the ones that are dumping this, these materials and stuff like that. I do go looking through, trying to find mail, try to find the responsible party. So I have ended up sending out letters and stuff like that just to get the process started, and I have gotten some replies and stuff just from these letters being sent out, but part of the fines is also part of the process.
Thank you.
Additionally, we will be working as part of this grant, we're committed to bringing to the board at a future date an illegal dumping ordinance, so we're working on that as well.
And that would be the mechanism to hold the dumpers or the responsible party accountable. If you find two pieces of identifying information...
Use the mic, sorry.
I apologize. So that would be the mechanism that we would use to hold the responsible or the dumpers responsible or accountable for their actions. If you find two pieces of identifying information, that is effectively your trash, you're responsible for that illegal dumping. And then there would also be a mechanism that if we catch you using a vehicle, then we can seize that vehicle, and that's a process that will also have to be developed. Obviously, we'll have to work with the county council's office to go through that. So it'd be asset forfeiture.
I know that we have the garbage ordinance, but that doesn't include the dumping side of things.
What that does is just the property, and what Joey was referring to earlier is that a lot of these property owners, if they're still around or haven't abandoned the property, they're victims, but under our codes, they're being held accountable and responsible for this. And so what we typically do is we go through this thing, they say they're not responsible. Unfortunately, the code holds them responsible, and then we advise them to put up measures to prevent this in the future. But in these instances up here, it's hard to secure these properties, and it's hard to monitor and surveil these properties and keep on top of them because they're so secluded and they're so far away from, you know, urban areas. So this grant will help them out or help to solve this problem and to clean up these properties where, again, we don't, we lack the resources here in the county and also a responsible party to take the actions that they need to do.
All right. Is there anything else to close on or any other questions? Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if the presentation was done. Really happy that we have a CalRecycle grant. I know I asked a while back. I was told we just didn't have the capacity to go after that. I've been watching the city of Clear Lake get millions and millions of dollars, looking forward. I don't want to dissuade you the way that you want to use it. Those 42 properties probably absolutely need to be targeted and dealt with. I'm hoping in the long run, we can continue to get more CalRecycle dollars and look at some of our red-tagged homes that need to be taken down because we're not getting any action from landlords to renovate or fix them, or maybe they're not even fixable. And at that point, they do need to be taken down because they are attractive for further nuisance and things like that. You mentioned prevention, and I really want to better, I don't need an answer now, but I want to better understand. To me, prevention is probably the most important part because we have failed, every jurisdiction has failed to figure out how to prevent these things from happening, and I feel it's a mismanagement of funds to continuously clean up some of the same properties that you end up going to. Sulfur Bank Road is a perfect example. I go out there during the earth daytime and clean it up, and I go right back out the week later, and it's almost right back where it came from the weekend before. It's disgusting. And I'm not going to blame it on our landfill cost. It's actually cheaper than most other places, and sometimes they throw away the stuff that you could throw away for free. So it's just laziness or trying to save a buck here or there, and it destroys our environment. So I'd really like to better understand what prevention methods are around. I know that I had a good conversation with Flock a while back. They actually recommended that we mix a Flock camera for the license plate reader with a Ring camera using solar so that the Ring camera can get the action of the people dumping, and the license plate reader can get the exact digitized version of the license plate because ALPRs only do pictures, they don't have the videos. So they said they were working on a new technology to help out because they were getting a lot of complaints, hey, we need to help with dumping. It's not just here, it's everywhere that's dealing with that. But I'd really love to see what kind of dollars within your prevention budget could be used on a high-level dumping ground area that you're continuously seeing. Can we try one innovative idea of what we can do to really catch these folks? Because I think we can, we're always being reactive. That to me is the proactive, where we're not going to see these things happening rather than continuously having to use dollars to be able to solve the problem that we can keep dealing with.
Yes, definitely appreciate your sentiments on that. This grant does have a small amount of money embedded for education and prevention. Because it is a small amount of money, we know we are going to have to be very selective about where we implement prevention measures and what we try, and I think we're on the same page about maybe trying something out and seeing if it works and being, you know, ready to flex and try something new. So it's definitely new for us to be looking at what prevention measures might work, you know, cameras and lighting and signage, but also like barriers and, right? We could maybe block off certain areas if we, so we have to, that's part of, as we're assessing each kind of location, we're going location by location specifically to kind of really think about what makes sense in a specific area and see if we can come up with some kind of a prevention measure idea that might work. But prevention on this, on this topic is pretty tricky, and you know, we're just going to have to kind of see, see what will work in our community.
Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, I really appreciate the fact that you're actually looking for the people that are dumping the garbage rather than putting it all on the landowner. So that's phenomenal that you're going through the trash and looking for that. That's, I like that. Touche.
And just so you know, we have had instances where we did find identifying information and actually went and contacted those people, went to their doors and said, is this you?
Perfect.
Obviously, they don't give an admission, but they voluntarily go and take care of that issue for us. So we, we do try to, with the resources we have, we try to make as much as possible.
That's awesome.
And one thing that we, we have to consider and probably get some more information on is there are fire gates throughout the area on that side of the county, and being able to maybe kind of see if we can use those gates to lock them off and prevent people from being able to go back there. I know there's a lot of issues that come with that, but that's an easy, low-cost, effective way to prevent people from getting to those back areas to dump. Mountain View Road in Clear Lake Oaks would probably be a prime example. They have two gates at both ends. If we could just lock that off, that would probably solve that problem. And Mountain View Road is a, one of our most egregious areas that we look to clean up, and that one's an habitual one too. That's gross, and again, that one flows down the hill, down into the lake on top of all the other environmental issues. So we are researching this matter, and I do appreciate the, the Flock cams and the Ring cam suggestion. We're open to ideas. We are looking into anything that's innovative that can help this, and it is a difficult task, and we have reached out to other jurisdictions, and they struggle with this as well, cities and rural areas. And I think the rural areas have a much more difficult task, given the fact that we have so much area that cannot be monitored and is unattended to.
All right.
I think the complexity is it's a misdemeanor crime, and you have to witness the misdemeanor crime because you can't just find something and suddenly place that and convict somebody for being the one to have done it because someone else could have thrown it for them. And so having that video and that witness testimony, it, that's the missing component to all these things, because I don't know how many times I drive to same places that have illegal dumping. I have yet to catch somebody in the act of. I've seen trucks that I'm like, I should probably follow you, but the act of catching somebody is difficult, so.
That's been the difficulty with the Flock cameras as well, because it takes the license plate. And so I know that we were working with the Sulfur Bank situation to try and get the game cameras and then get the signs. We ran into a hiccup, but I think now it probably might be a good time for us to do that. I know we were like right at getting the signs done, and then something went wrong with, with it. So I know that that will be a good contribution to this situation.
And the other thing, it's, it kind of goes to what Supervisor Spatia was saying, it's behavior, and people just need to understand what they're doing. They're not just dumping on the county, they're dumping on themselves. And so people just need to take that responsibility not to do that. You know, doing the right thing is tough, so we just have to ask our residents to do the right thing and understand this affects them indirectly in multitude of ways, so.
Supervisor Asmussen?
Just a quick question. Do we know who owns all these gates that we're talking about? Are they private? Are they county gates or?
So I apologize, I brought this up because this is information I'm searching for. I've never gotten a clear answer. It sounds like the fire districts have a key to it, but you can't lock them. Maybe Supervisor Crandall has some knowledge on this, I'm not sure. But I, this is information that we're looking for so we can understand this, so we can look to put these measures into place. Also, you have to take into accountability for property owners to access their own properties. So I don't know if that involves giving them keys, notices and all that process, but I would be very interested to know who's responsible for these gates and what that process looks like to...
I know with the specific properties, they will work with the fire department to have a red box that they put on, and that's, some of those folks go through that, but then there's also some that just have their regular key, and you'll see, and I, you probably remember the, this, I think that road, Foothill, I think, or something like that, over on, behind Robinson, they had to put up a fence that opened because it was a public way or a public road or something like that. So, so there's, there's that as well.
Yeah, I know there's complexities, but I appreciate the investigation to find that out, because I think if there are certain areas that we can secure...
All right, one second. Sam? We've lost internet. Okay. So how much time do you need? Okay. We will take five minutes and see where we're at in five minutes, so we don't push it out too far.
Still frozen.
Yeah, if we're still frozen, then we will postpone a little more and then see where we go from there. All right, so let's see, 11, we'll look at 11:30. I know it's six minutes, but we'll, we'll look at 11:30. And then Johanna? That, Tom? Oh, there we go. We're ready.
I saw you looking earlier. It's all zzzzz. I thought something was going to blow up.
All right. Looks like we've got everything fixed, right, Sam? All right, we got it working. Did you want to close on anything, Shannon or Marcus?
I think that was it from us.
Okay. So it's the bottom one. Yeah, yeah. Yep, right there. So Dave, if you want to come up and just kind of briefly go through these.
I'm Dave Hendrick from 2675 Sherman Street in Nice.
Dave is also a part of the ad hoc for the West Region Town Hall. They put together an ad hoc committee to deal with the Pile Road situation, and they have done a lot of slides here. We'll go through them, we'll try to take a minute or so to go through these, Dave, and then I'll let you do your three minutes, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, go ahead. This is a map of about 70 spots in the Clear Lake subdivision where there's garbage, people living, just old piles, all kinds of stuff that's been dumped. Go ahead. This is the Clear Lake subdivision. There are 6,000 lots up here. Most of them are 50 by 100 or, or smaller. And, okay. This is Queenie's residence. This was pulled in about four years ago in the middle of a rainy night by a tractor and dumped up there on a hill, and they lived in it until just this fall, and they're, they're no longer there. Go ahead. These cars just show up everywhere. This is Cody Culver's truck, and this is a, I think maybe it was a stolen car that got left up there, and it just disappeared. This is another, the other side of Queenie's encampment. Go ahead. This car, I took CHP down and they don't want, they don't want to deal with it. They're not going to pull it out, but this is maybe a football field away from my house on a small dirt trail that goes from one road to another road. Go ahead. This is at the Cell Tower site, and there's a suburban that's been there forever, and this is huge pile of garbage which has deteriorated. This is on Main Street. I was just talking about this. This is a place where there was cleaned up completely. There was, there was no garbage here at all. There are several slides of this area. This is another view, looking down the road there. This was dumped on the road above my house, or maybe 300 feet above my house. This is Cody Culver's encampment, which is, it's an illegal encampment. He's been there for two years or better. He's kind of on his own lots. He owns two lots in the area, but he's only half on them. And now that's developed even further. Go ahead. This is the, another view at the Cell Tower. Go ahead. And I'm not exactly sure where this is. This may be on Main Street again. This is on Pile Road there, and this has even gotten worse at this point. This is left there right beside that other one. This is on Pile Road, and this is on Pile Road. A lot of these, I've got GPS coordinates on. This is on Pile Road where they'd started a fire a couple of years ago. This is further up that road up towards the Cell Tower. There was a guy living in there. He's been gone for about two months now, so nobody's there, but the pile of stuff is still there. This was a pot grow, and it did get cleaned up. They came in and cut down all the plants, all except for six of them, I guess. Oh, and these were the dogs that were running loose. She had eight dogs up there in Queenie's encampment, and she didn't control them at all. They were all over the place. I went out one afternoon and there were five Chihuahuas chasing deer. It was actually pretty funny. This was, this has been cleaned up. The guy who owned it found it up there. It was parked up there. I told CHP about it. They didn't even look at it, I don't believe. And it was eventually trashed, completely stripped, turned over, rolled down a hill, and the guy found it, and he pulled it out of there so he could get the cash money out of, he could get from a junkyard. This is a pile of household stuff, probably left when somebody died, and somebody paid them to carry the stuff off and take it to the dump, and so it ended up on the road up in the middle of the hill. That's the other side of that pile. This is just roofing debris that some guy dumped beside the road on Main Street. These were... that some guy dumped beside the road on Main Street. These were addresses that we found right up on the point. And this is a really nice place. You look out over Lake County and you see the whole lake and all pile road. And so we found this. Go ahead. This is also up there at that point. That car was burned one night and I watched the fire department up there working on it. This is the same place. This is another pile of household debris. Apparently somebody died and they dumped it. And all this stuff is washing down into the lake. All the stuff, there's diapers and all kinds of junk in it. This was a stolen car. CHP told me to get away from it and not come back until there was an officer present, which I did. And they came and towed that one out. Another pile of debris, I, oh yeah, this is on the backside over Monroe Street, Morton Street, I'm sorry. This has been there for the 20 years I've lived in Lake County. This boat is full of garbage and it's been sitting there. This is on King Street. It's a pile of debris. There was some guy living in the bushes there and code enforcement came and eventually put up a notice to get it quit or whatever. And he left, but he left all of his garbage. Oh, that's his Main Street again. More Main Street, more Main Street. That's Main Street. This is Morton Street. This was all on a trailer. They had a trailer that was heaped high with it. And apparently they needed to use the trailer, so they dumped it all there on the road and then somebody cleaned it up into red plastic bags. And now they've thrown that over the bank. And so it's still there. Oh, these are my open code complaints. There's a couple of closed ones there. The other slide is that too. All right.
Thank you for that, Dave. And I think Marcus, like last year or something like that, we went on a ride with Dave and Mike, was it?
Yes.
We went on a ride and seen a lot of these different areas. And I know that at the Worth meeting, we talked about the ad hoc committee putting in a lot of different input when it came to the marking of the area. Like they have everything mapped on Google and whatnot. So just wanted to give that opportunity for them to come and.
And I do want to add, this grant, a lot of the sites that were based on Mr. Hendrick's maps. So he came to us with his map. He showed us those sites. We then went out, searched out for funds to address these issues. And his map was used as the basis for the submission of our grant. So this is kind of a partnership, working with the community, letting them know what the issues are. And then we went out, found the resources to address that. And that's what we're hoping to accomplish in phase one of this project.
And I know that too, the camera that's out there, there's a license plate reader and it keeps getting broke at pile road. So.
Yeah, they knocked it down again.
Yeah. And so, yeah. So yeah, I think we're going to have to work, on my end, I'm going to have to work on getting another cam or something that's going to complement that one. So we see who does it.
We are definitely interested in any collaboration with other groups and community residents around the prevention measures and education and free dump days. So any, you know, we could maybe schedule something to talk about how we want to address really the Nice Hills in terms of those items in particular, prevention measures, cameras, et cetera.
And the free dump days are included in the Cal recycle grant as well?
We do have some money for those days as well.
Okay. Well, I have a Google map of 70 sites around the Clear Lake Gardens area, which is interactive. And I keep adding to it. And I'm happy to share it with you. So far, I don't believe anybody from the county has been able to open it. But it's a Google map site. And I can share it however you like. Anyway, I do have public comments later, I guess.
I'll let these folks go and then I'll open it up for sure, for the supervisors. Go ahead.
I feel for Chair Crandall. Paper parcels are a really big burden to have to deal with. I think it's a good opportunity. Again, not sure what the funding availability is or maybe a proposal can come back to us. But I know the city of Clear Lake has had some success with K rails by blocking off certain areas where there's no houses whatsoever. Obviously, people can still walk in to the area or jump over the K rails, but at least vehicles, unless they're willing to bash their vehicles in order to move the K rails, which does occur. But it at least limits the amount of access to very isolated areas. And those areas, unfortunately, is just a wide open playground for people to do bad things. So I feel you on that. I deal with it as well in the areas of Clear Lake and District Two. Paper parcels are just a hassle.
Supervisor Rasmussen, did you have something?
Nothing further.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and open it up for the public. And if anyone wants to come up and make a comment, Dave, by all means, can make your comment. I know you wrote one as well.
Yeah, I wrote a whole bunch of stuff, but I said a lot of it already. So I just think that we really need to have some action in terms of prevention. We need to get, stop these people from being able to get up there or somehow record them going up there. Mike and I have both stopped people from going up there and dumping. He got his mule run into by a vehicle when he was trying to stop some guy from dumping. The guy was getting the hell out. And I've, I chased a guy down, found out where he lived and we got him to clean up the mess. It took him five hours to get the trailer that he dumped up there out. And so he got his punishment out of it. But he got paid $100 by his father-in-law to dump this trailer at the landfill. And he chose to just dump it off up there. And so that's what we need to do is change the way people think around here. It's a beautiful area up there. It's gorgeous. I ride up there almost every day and I ride past these piles and piles and piles of trash. And they're just everywhere. I only showed about half of it. And I can think of seven or eight vehicles that are dumped in the woods there that are on my map, but they're not going to get them out easily. And I would just like to see something happen. And this grant being spent in an appropriate way and efficiently to get this stuff done. And keep the pollution from going in the lake. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. I know that Vance Ricks and myself went and cleaned up one area like right by and it was, it took such a long, it would have taken even longer had we filled up a trailer full. And it's just, there's still so much you have to get on the ground because it sits so long. But yeah, it's, that's the unfortunate thing is we end up putting all of this work into getting it up and then they do it again and we're back and forth. You know, I know folks are always like skeptical when we do dump days with the, with different agencies and whatnot. But it's like, well, it still takes a lot to get it even though. So it's almost better to do the dump days. It's like chicken and the egg, I guess you could say. Anyhow, anyone else want to?
Large Uing Public Services Director. So Public Services Department has the responsibility to oversee the county-wide integrated waste management plan. And there's a lot that goes into waste management. Illegal dumping is one component of that. And I just wanted to say thank you to the community development staff, specifically Maria, Shannon and Marcus for taking on something that has in my, what, six or eight years with public services, been a struggle. And they've taken it and run with it. So we're never going to get to the 100% solution, but I really appreciate that, that we have a department that's willing to take it on and try, try to solve the problem and continuing to see where there are problems, how can we solve that? So we've, we've been working together through this, primarily through the Solid Waste Task Force, which continues. And whether it's through the task force or at a staff level, they're a pleasure to work with. So I just wanted to extend my, my thanks.
I have a brief question before you sit down. Sorry for the random question. Do you know approximately how much you bring in at the landfill on fees alone?
On, well, on fee, well, that's a, that's a challenging question to answer definitively, but.
I'm looking for approximate.
Yeah. Well, the landfill as a, as an enterprise fund, it's essentially, it's a business. We don't rely on the, on the general fund at all. But fees, whether it's curbside fees or just someone coming in with, with their trailer, I think we're in the range of somewhere around $3 million per year. But it's, you know, we have certain funds that are paying for quite a, quite a lot of things at the landfill, whether it's expansion, equipment. But, and I'm not sure.
I'm looking for those going to the landfill to dump their loads, not the ones on curbside because they're paying a different type of bill there.
That, off the top of my head, I don't. But I think it's likely about 25%, somewhere in the 25% range of the overall.
I'm just kind of curious as to what's the cost of paying code enforcement? What's the cost of abatement? What's the cost of what we leave behind that we can't get to versus the cost of dumping? And if ever we were to try to keep you whole, obviously, we can't just take away the 3 million or 25% of the 3 million, but to keep you whole and just say, hey, we're paying for the landfill to be open and available for anyone to just go and dump as long as you can prove you're from Lake County or something along those lines. Do we see a reduction in dumping illegally? Just, just a thought of, of kind of doing the equation of what's the cost versus the loss? Thank you. Because that's an enormous amount of stuff that was just shown to us and it's sad.
Any other? Come on up. There's one on Zoom. Okay.
Hi, I'm Thomas Seves. I'm on the, from Nice. I'm on the member of the Worth Board as well for the last four or five years. I'm also advocate for cleaning. Our North Shore have been doing it for seven or more years on the Nice cutoff with a team of people. And the adoption program is a wonderful program. Hopefully, we can promote that more. I got a lot of thoughts on this. And I think I've talked to Marcus before about, you know, I'm so glad we're getting the money to do this cleanup in these hills and areas. However, like the Nice cutoff, it's going to be repoluted soon after. Or amazing, you know. So I think some elements have to be looked at. And I think Supervisor Sabatier mentioned an out-of-box thinking here. I think we really have to think about doing more dump days, maybe even putting a bin at pile road for people just to throw stuff away in for free. And paying more money and putting money in those areas that we can help persuade that behavior to solidate it, you know, to a certain area. So they're not just in our hills. I'm telling you, North Shore, especially through Nice, I do a lot of, a lot of you guys know I'm a cyclist, bicyclist, cyclist. I ride through there a lot. And, and I see things on the ground, like between the freeway, maybe getting together with Caltrans, they need to do more cleanup on the freeways and so forth. But I think out-of-box thinking has to be implemented here, like putting more cleanup days, more bins in places. Like what you just said, Supervisor, about maybe doing, opening the transfer station up for free days, more things to be free. And implementing, also, I'm really an advocate, advocate of, and it hasn't always been looked upon as something positive, but universal trash collection. I'm really for that. It needs to be done. And I know it's a difficult process for many, but I'm sorry. People have to be forced into doing things because I have a lot of neighborhoods in my area that have trash in the back, trash in the front, garbage everywhere. And a lot of that has to do is because they don't have buckets to throw their stuff in. And you get two free items that can help. So I really hope the BO, the supervisors, think about implementing an ordinance for universal trash collection this year. So there's some thoughts on that. But thanks. I'm glad we have the grants. Hopefully, we get more, continue the process of eliminating this blight and making our area more enjoyable for our travelers and for tourism and coming over to us. Because I was over cycling in Napa Valley and enjoying myself. And I said, man, if we can get some people to come over to our side that spend millions of dollars in their side, that would be fantastic. So thank you so much.
Hi, Elaine Brown. You know, I lived in Fresno, California for 12 years. And twice a year, they let everyone just throw, and the households, all in the streets, all their trash that they just want to throw in the streets. And then I don't know how they collect it, how they do that. But everyone throws their trash in the street twice a year. Back then, you might want to call them and see how they do that. And then maybe those people that have extra trash and that don't have trash can like, in their backyards, can just put it out there too.
I know that they, I think CNS Waste came to a couple of meetings here and there. And then when we do the dump days in Laserna, folks that are waiting in line, we notify them that you can actually do two big items. If you have garbage service, you just have to notify them and they'll come get it. There's those things. We've done three in Laserna and that's what, almost 60,000? I don't know. I keep saying tons, but it's not tons. It's 20,000 cubic, cubic, yeah, cubic yards. And so total 60,000. I don't know how many tons that is. But we were looking at doing one as well in, with Worth. So yeah, just those type of things. And I know that the garbage portion of it with the, with the bins are going to be good. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in public input? All right. All right, Tim.
My name is Tim Keer. I live in Nice and I'm on the Western Region Town Hall. I want to echo Supervisor Sabatier's comments about whether it's a question of how much, is it, is it cheaper to abate or is it cheaper to let people dump free? And it's, like you say, it's just a straight equation, you know? And thank you.
Okay. If you unmute and state your name for the record and we'll give you three minutes on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Angela Amaral. I wanted to ask on these, the properties are going to be abated on private properties with severe environmental violations. Are they referred to, like such, such as those that are located on waterways? Are they referred to CDFW or the DA for consideration of additional fines and/or prosecution? And then one other thing maybe the county could consider would be doing a pilot program of staging debris boxes in areas that are quite a distance from the dumps considered North Shore. Something along the lines of a smaller scale transfer station of just placing debris boxes one day a week and allowing people to dump in that way. I know in our area, we usually don't see a lot of outside dumping. But as these areas are getting abated along Highway 20, we're starting to notice it. In the last three days, somebody has come out here and dumped an engine right next to our mailboxes that we're not going to be able to get rid of before spring. So I would just really like to know if the environmental violations are being referred to CDFW or the DA. Thank you.
So I think I'm in the best position to provide a response if that's okay with the board. All right. So we have finally navigated the bureaucracy of CDFW and we are starting to work and refer cases over to them. We have two right now. I'm not going to comment on those any deep, any further because there's investigations going on. But we have gotten to the people at CDFW and we've referred these over. There's one in the Etowah Springs area that's very, of real interest to them. So we have started that process. And I would also like to cultivate a relationship with the district attorney's office so that we can refer these overs. I mean, I think we need to have, get with them, have a meeting, see what we need to do on our end so that we can prepare a package for them so that they can go ahead and prosecute and get a successful prosecution. So we have made those inroads and we are starting to do that, at least with CDFW. The DA will still have to work at that relationship. I'd just like to also comment. The reason she's seeing all those dumps on Highway 20 is because we've ramped up our operations. And as we start to get into these problem properties that are having these public nuisance, public nuisance issues and non-compliant issues, that's what happens. We come in, we tell them they have to clean it up. And then we get this thing where they start dumping all across the county. I think the board's been privy to this over some of our lean hearings. So that's the effect of us, you know, being efficient and effective at our job. And that's something that we're going to have to look to address as this comes up. And as we deal with these problems, they look and dump in other areas. And there'll be a lean hearing coming forward where we'll discuss this. And there'll be a lean hearing coming forward where we'll discuss this, where we had one property, they started dumping RVs all over Spring Valley. So that's just, well, the, just a reaction to what happens when you start doing efficient and effective code enforcement.
Thank you for that. Is there any other public input?
Juliet Carrera, Upper Lake. Just to build on what was the Zoom attendees said and what Marcus just said, I also encourage you to work with the Water Board, who's responsible for water quality. CDFW is not. And I say that because there's a project or dump site in Nice, Marin Street. And I was just recently up there with some neighborhood people. And there was chicken manure and soil in a stream. And submitted that to the Water Board and they immediately took it. So I encourage you to work with the Water Board. I think you're going to have more speedy response from them than CDFW because of water quality. Thank you.
Did they give you any, like a response or like an email or something?
Yes.
Could you forward that to them so they could see?
I'd be happy to.
Excellent. Is there any other public input? All right, there's none, I'll bring it back to the board. I know that there's a couple of things mentioned. I know universal trash has been talked about before. I know that Supervisor Steele, previous Supervisor Steele, I know they were looking at that then. Hasn't come up since. I know that's always a topic in my town councils. And then also the tax, there used to be, previous to like the 80s, I think, there used to be, your garbage would go to your tax bill. Well, for some reason, Lake County opted out of that, I think, or something like that. I know, I forgot if I talked to you about it, Lloyd, but I know that Lake County had opted out of that in the 80s or something along those lines. And so now if we were to try to implement that, it would be a difficult task. So, because that's what a lot of other counties in the United States do is they add it to their tax bill so that people have to have garbage. So that's something that, you know, I've been looking at, but it's like I keep hearing that we can't. Yeah, because we opted out of it in the 80s. But there may be a way, I don't know. But just, I just wanted to mention that, that I've heard that before. I know, so, did you have something?
I do. I want to thank you guys for what you're doing. That's amazing. I know I can't stand it when people are dumping. And we've actually had that issue on our own property. And where my son almost dumping a dirt bike almost landed on somebody's garbage. And it happened to be a school teacher that dumped it. But we made him come back and pick it up. So I, kind of going off of what Mr. Bruno has said, I'm thinking that maybe a trial introduction system where we do it the first Monday of the month or something like that, free dump days, to see if something like that would work. Might be a good idea to kind of put our foot in the door and kind of get us started, just a suggestion. I really like the carrot and the stick though, where you guys are trying to start prosecuting those that are creating this crime. Because I think letting these smaller crimes go can escalate because they're lax about it and they're getting away with it. So I just think it's horrid and I really don't like it. Recycling, I know that there's not a lot of recycling in the county right now. It's difficult for people and that's another avenue that I think would help with some of it. And I think it would be nice to get some recycling going. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, there's a comment. I appreciate the presentation and the work and trying to get ahead of all these dumping problems. Thank you. And I do like the idea of exploring, you know, what we can afford as far as additional, doing some free dump days. I don't, I don't know right now how that, that works. But I think it's, it's a good idea to, to have it on the radar to look into.
If there's nothing else, is there anything else to close or anything like that? All right, with that, I appreciate the, you know, this presentation and appreciate allowing us to take the time to allow the Upper Lake Ad Hoc Committee to express the work that they've put into this as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and close this item and.